Good morning. Apologies for the delay, everyone. The July 15, 2025 work session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Do any of my colleagues have any questions before we begin? All right. Resolution number 1725, providing host jurisdiction approval of the issuance of private activity bonds for financing of the villages of Providence Point. Mr. Hunt?
Chair. Deputy County Attorney with me, Ethan Hunt, on behalf of the administration. So this resolution is providing host authority, host jurisdiction approval for private activity bonds for financing of the villages of Providence Point. This is something that's required under the Internal Revenue Code. So Public Finance Authority is based in Madison, Wisconsin. They're issuing private activity bonds on behalf of the villages at Providence Point to insist, to assist in financing development of the village at Providence Point as a continuing care retirement community. The Internal Revenue Code requires, provides that interest on private activity bonds may be tax exempt in certain circumstances. And one of the requirements when they are tax exempt is that the bond issuance be approved by a governmental unit having jurisdiction over the area. And federal regulations also require that a public hearing is required before host approval, and that the hearing be advertised for at least seven days in advance of the hearing in a newspaper of general circulation. So that hearing will be at the next council meeting on July 21. And under the charter, when federal or state law requires the local governing body to take action, it is done at the impetus of the county executive and with approval by the county council.
Where exactly is this? Is it, is it you, Ms. Robyn?
It is. It's in District 6 at the intersection of Forest Drive and Spa Road.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions or comments? Nothing to add, Ms. Robyn? Okay. All right. That's it for Resolution 1725. Thank you. Bill number 5925, pensions. Again, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt, on behalf of the administration. I do have Ann Bedowski, our Personnel Officer, and Kelly Lovett, our Assistant Personnel Officer, as well as Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, Laurie Blair-Closmyre, our Deputy County Attorney. So this ordinance is submitted on behalf of the Office of Personnel. It implements changes to the pension plans based on the results of union negotiations this past year with various collective bargaining units representing county employees. It adds a seventh year to the Deferred Retirement Option Program, or DROP, participation for classifications in CPS 1 and 2, and CJPS, which are Correctional Program Specialists and Criminal Justice Program Specialists. It also changes the number of firefighter union members who are eligible to enter DROP in the fire plan. Currently, it's four per month. This changes it to 20 per quarter and caps it at 72 annually. It modifies the annual interest rate for DROP accounts for participants in the police service retirement plan and IAFF member participants in the fire service retirement plan from 4.25% to 5%, and it increases the amount of employee pension contributions for IAFF member participants in the fire service retirement plan from 7.25% to 8%, and for all participants in the police plan from 7.25% to 8.25%. It also cleans up a couple of missing changes in Section 5-1-205A, 5-4-103.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question on the fiscal impact. The auditor's write-up notes that there was not confirmation from the administration on some of their fiscal review. It seems as though the expenditure is increasing by $762,821, but the revenue by the employees is increasing beyond that, so it's not a true increase if this is accurate. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Councilmember. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So unfortunately, you're looking at apples and oranges there. So the increased pension contribution was part of the negotiations with their compensation package. Now, those two unions got, I would say, a higher compensation package on the money side because they also increased their pension contribution. So the county had been looking to do that for a while. The union wanted specific compensation improvements, and so that kind of balanced out there. The increase in the expenditures is on the interest side of the drop that they had. That interest rate is increasing from, what, 7.5% to 8%? 8%. So that's where the revenue is coming from. So that's a separate issue than, I'm sorry, that's where the expense is coming from, which is a separate issue of where you're seeing the revenue. Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense. I appreciate that explanation.
The fire participants is increasing from a max of 40, 80, or to 72? That seems like a really big jump.
Ann Bedowski, Personnel Officer. Yes, it does seem like a big jump. However, they are now sort of approaching multi-years in a row where they had larger academy classes 20 years ago, and so more people are being eligible for DROP, and they have been maxing out month over month. And so when you, when we hit our four-person participant max in DROP, they have to wait a month. And so we've sort of been waiting for this to kind of hit, to be able to increase, and their amount now, this new increase, will mirror what the FOP has.
Okay.
Who is also not at their max at 72 a year.
Okay. So they haven't hit their max, but that, so that gives some room in there.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. There any other questions?
Ms. Feedler. This is just a statement, actually. Mr. Trumbauer, would you mind just working with the auditor's office so that we can add the details to the fiscal note as you described? I think it would just help clarify to have that information on the record.
Just so I understand, so you're asking to amend the administration's fiscal note, or you just want me to circle back with the auditor so everyone's on the same page?
Yes, if you could circle back with the auditor's office, because the note that I'm looking at right now seems like it's not quite there, and I think it could get there in the next day or so.
Okay. Yes, of course.
Perfect, thanks.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we will move on to Bill number 6025. Annapolis Road Special Community Benefit District. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Laurie Blair-Closmyre, Deputy County Attorneys here, and I believe Janay Moulden, our Management Assistant in the Budget Office, who handles all these special community benefit districts. So Annapolis Road Special Community Benefits District is entering into a loan agreement with Shore United Bank in the amount of $640,000, with a term of 15 years that they are using to purchase commercial property and unimproved residential lots located at 2632, 2634, and 2638 Carrollton Road, to enable the association to obtain a loan from Shore United Bank by providing a source of funds for repayment of the loan. The county is undertaking the obligations that are set forth in this obligate, in this ordinance. Purchase of the property has been authorized by the majority of owners within the Special Community Benefits District. The association meeting minutes from the February 4 and April 1 meetings discussing the terms of the loan were provided to the council along with their budget request and loan commitment letter, as well as the association bylaws. So this is merely allowing the obligation to be imposed on the residential tax accounts in the district to pay off the loan.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Robyn, is this your district? That's what I thought. All right. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to Bill number 6125, the Epping Forest Special Community Benefit District.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Again, with me at the table, Laurie Blair-Closmyre, Deputy County Attorney, Janay Moulden, our Management Assistant. So Epping Forest Special Community Benefits District is entering into a loan agreement with Manufacturers and Traders Trust Company, which is actually the official name of M&amp;T Bank, for a loan in the amount of $1.5 million, with a term of 10 years amortized over 20 years that is to be used for the renovation and replacement of the community marina. To enable the association to obtain the loan from M&amp;T, county is undertaking the obligation that's set forth in this ordinance. So again, it's imposing the tax, special taxes on the residents of the district to pay off the loan.
So we've gotten some questions about this one, and one concern that came up, and this was noted in our auditor's note as well. There's no plan for exactly what the estimates are for what they're going to do for this project. Is that required? Is it just, you know, how much detail are they required to provide when they come to seek their own funds or to get a loan from their SCBD funds?
Janay Moulden, Budget Office. They have submitted multiple plans. At this point, I'm not sure if they've decided which contractor they're going with, but that can be obtained prior to.
Okay. So they haven't decided. So, Ms. Robyn, I'm going to ask you again, because it's yours, if you have any more information, if you, no? Okay. Thank you. All right. Ms. Feedler.
I just have one quick question. I also received a few emails on this, and on the loan, if the members of the marina cannot cover the cost of the loan, is that how this is set up, or is it the?
Janay Moulden for the Budget Office. It's not only for the members of the marina, the SCBD, all of the property owners will be paying back the loan.
Okay.
Because it's community-owned property.
Right. I saw that, and I thought that that seemed out of the norm of how the SCBDs work, but I just wanted to confirm that there was no contract or anything legally written that said only the marina members.
No. It's not out of the norm because it's community-owned property.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to Bill number 6225, Watershed Protection and Restoration Program. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Laurie Blair-Closmyre, Deputy County Attorney, as well as Eric Michelson, our Senior Environmental Policy Director and Deputy Director of the Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration, and Brenda Morgan, our Engineer Manager for Modeling and the Analysis Unit in the Department of Public Works. So this bill is introduced, is being introduced at the request of the administration on behalf of the Department of Public Works to make some minor changes to the watershed protection and restoration fee to ensure greater consistency in assessment of the fee. It's been in place in Anarundel County for over a decade. Throughout this time, DPW staff have worked with property owners to try and to make sure that the fee is applied in a fair and equitable manner, and generally try to resolve fee disputes with an eye towards interpreting the fee rules as charitably as possible for the benefit of the public. Over that decade that we've had this fee in place, there have been some sort of unique and unusual situations that have arisen from time to time. So this package of minor changes is being requested to ensure consistent application of the program and that it aligns with the intent of the law. Eric, do you want to run through the changes?
Sure. Eric Michelson, Deputy Director, Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration. As Ethan has mentioned, there's a number of sort of cleanup items that we've got in this bill. We were looking basically for a way to, with a decade of experience, clean up some of the inconsistencies that we've seen. As you can see in the fiscal note, there's a few items that actually do potentially result in additional revenues. Among those are essentially treating condominium properties as sort of aggregated properties, the way the State Department of Assessments and Taxation handles those properties. Now, they're not necessarily all tied together under a single tax account, but for the purposes of administration of this fee, we try to treat those all essentially as a single aggregated property so that it can apply various credits and whatnot to those. And so this allows us to just uniformly treat those properties going forward. There's also a cleanup item with regards to how we handle private roads. Oftentimes, in homeowners associations or condo associations, there are private roads that are installed as part of the development process. When those are first placed in the ground, they are handled one way in terms of the developer building them, and then at the point that they're handed off to the HOAs, they're charged the full freight. We've had folks come back to us and say, "Well, why are we having to pay more now since it's out of the developer's hands than when it's in the HOA's hands?" And so the goal here is essentially to have a consistency so that they're treated the same way throughout the process from them being constructed and being recognized as impervious surfaces. There's also some language in the bill for how we handle farm properties or properties with farm uses essentially, which will mirror the way that we treat those properties administratively currently, but cleaning it up in the code. And then also making sure that the properties that have, for economically stressed landowners, are treated in a way that's consistent with other programs that the county has for giving relief from the stormwater fees. So there's a variety of items, and like I say, this was generally a cleanup bill where we were trying to take a number of things that we've come across over the years and compile them into a single bill.
I will just also add that currently, in county law, there's a deadline of September 30 each year for property owners to appeal the calculation of the fee. We're removing that so that people can apply at any point in the year.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Right now, when a development is passed to an HOA, how is the square footage calculated for the HOA?
I'll let Brenda handle it.
Impervious surface square footage?
So it will depend on when our last impervious data set was developed. If we have the official data set from the ortho imagery that has been digitized by a consultant for us, we will take that impervious surface. If we are not to that point yet, but the development has been completed or the homeowners have moved into their homes, we will go through and hand-digitize the impervious. So we look at the aerial imagery and trace the outlines of the impervious surface to calculate that square footage. And we try to do that in a very conservative manner, such that we'd rather underestimate than overestimate that amount before the official impervious data set comes in.
Okay. And is there a process if an HOA member or someone in the community is observing the process, and they disagree with the square footage measurement? Is there a process to appeal that number?
There is. That is our appeals process. So you can come back to us with a questionable impervious assessment. We also do flag every impervious change in the data set beyond, I want to say it's, for an HOA, it's beyond $500, where if there's a change in the fee that increases by $500 with a new impervious data set, we go in and actually check those visually and make sure that there was not an error, say, a playground was delineated as impervious, or there's a dirt patch that was reflective and got missed, misinterpreted as concrete. Before we bill anything beyond a $500 jump, we actually go in and set eyes on those areas.
Okay. And then final question in this particular area of the bill. Is there an audit that's done on the measurements on an annual basis, or is it just all internally controlled, as you've mentioned?
It's all internal, but our QA process involves, like I said, looking for differences between one impervious data set and the next. So we go through and look at every tax account and look at the change in impervious for every tax account. We also do QA QC processes when that impervious data set is developed. So before it gets deployed for use within the county, there's a group of GIS people throughout the county who go in and look at individual tiles of impervious surface to make sure that they're accurately delineated compared to the ortho imagery, and then also that the calculations are correct for what an area indicates.
Okay. That is helpful information in knowing the process, if I may, Madam Chair. For the 50% credit on stormwater remediation, is that a one-time 50% credit, or is it annual? And how does one get that credit?
It's annual. There is currently an application process where somebody can come to us with a BMP, and we've modified this process over the years. We initially put a lot of the onus on the landowners to present the information about their BMP, to document what the stormwater treatment was. We've moved away from that more to a model of if you come to us and you indicate you have a BMP, we have a lot of those records in-house. So we, to the point we can, we fill in every detail about the BMP treatment that we need. And if there's anything that's outstanding, we'll try to work with the landowner and reach out to them to fill in any gaps that we might have. But we've tried to take that off of the landowner's side so that they don't have to contact an engineer or do intensive record searches. So if they let us know they've got a BMP, we go ahead and try to take on as much of the documentation process as possible.
Okay. And I'm asking these questions because there is a community in my district, and the HOA has been very involved in this area of our code. And the one question they had asked was, has the department ever considered codifying the 50% under certain conditions so that it's not an annual application?
Oh, it's not an, I'm sorry, it's not an annual application. The application is one time, and then it's, it's applied in perpetuity, assuming that continued BMP inspections, which are part of the state code, are passed every three years. And if they're not, we send a letter to the landowner, as well as our inspections and permits department make their own contact to let them know that their credit is at risk, but we want to work with them to bring the, to resolve any maintenance or repair issues that will allow us to continue the credit.
Okay.
So they only apply once, and then we have, they put in an application one time, and then it is deducted each year.
Okay. That is very helpful. And I, for transparency, just received a very detailed email yesterday, and I haven't digested it all. Those are just some top-line questions I had. I'll be circling back to you all probably offline with more questions.
We've already been in communication with Mr. Miller as well. So we're trying to figure out what we can do administratively to respond to some of the issues he's brought up, which we think would help with transparency in terms of how the fee is administered.
Yeah, I think he brought up some great points, so I appreciate your willingness to work with him on that, and I look forward to working with you, too.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you have an estimate on how many property owners might be affected by these changes?
We can probably obtain that reasonably with a reasonable analysis. We looked more at the dollar figures that tallied up, but I think underneath that would be the number of landowners that we can investigate.
And follow-up. Has there been community engagement so that folks are aware that this is being considered for those who might be affected? Have you heard any, heard some community feedback, it sounds like, but just curious where the level of community feedback might be.
So we've really only heard from Growth Action Network and a particular individual who's involved with that group. But we have not had a formal community engagement process for this at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
So you said that this is making change to make condos now aggregated property. Does that mean up to now, each condo owner was being charged separately for this?
So Brenda will correct me if I'm wrong, but it's essentially the way that it's been worked, that it's worked is that the condo is, the condo association is charged a fee, and then that is broken out by property owners. And then there's also a credit or sort of a cap that can be applied in those instances. So in many of these cases, what we've tried to do, again, is pull in sort of these outlying properties and make sure that they're included. This just creates a process to make sure that some of those areas, like parking lots or other park areas adjacent to the condo association, are all folded in to the single bill, and again, that that cap can be applied and whatnot. Yeah, sure.
So we were thinking, I think, when the fee was developed, that the condo tax accounts would be set up similar to an HOA tax account, where the common elements would be in their own taxable parcel. In some cases, what has happened is the entire condominium association is in one huge parcel, and there, I believe, was wording in the code about the building being the responsibility of the condo owners. But then that left all of the common elements out. And now ESTAT has moved to a model, and again, this puts in inconsistency because of older properties being divided and assigned tax accounts in one method versus the current, which is that there are some common element properties that aren't getting tax accounts or that are being split off completely from the main condo building. So it's a mishmash of ways that these have been delineated. So we wanted to use the code to create a common approach, regardless of how they're being divided.
Okay. All right. All right. Any further questions? Ms. Pickard?
It's more of a, more of a comment, but I always love all the brackets, figuring out what's staying, what's going from the code. But I do appreciate, I know, you know, we've done a lot of work in our housing policy to create different dwelling types. So I see you're acknowledging these in this, but also, we're also seeing, I think, an uptick in the kinds of, the diversity of housing that's being developed. So this is a very timely update to the code, I think, before we get, the code gets further and further outdated. So it's good work. I will have to read it through without, with all the words that are being removed and words added. It's quite an exercise to read code, or to read legislation, but thank you for this work. It looks tedious, but it sounds like we have the expertise at the table, so thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter.
One final question. I just want to make sure I'm reading the legislative summary properly as I go home from this meeting. So there is a line in the summary where it says, "In total, there are seven proposed revisions, four of which relate to unusual circumstances in assessing the fee." Is it, those four, are they the items actually numbered 1, 2, 3, 4? I just want to make sure I'm matching the right this to that, if that makes sense.
I think the four changes are the subparts of number two.
Yes.
Okay. So they're A, B, C, D. Thank you. That's exactly the clarification I was looking for. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions, thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Okay, next, Bill number 6325, Community Piers and Launching Ramps. This is yours, Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You all may remember that Bill 1625 that passed had a section regarding ADA access to peers, hearing from, planning, and zoning. They felt that, or actually, the CAC reviewed, and in conjunction with OPC, felt like the section regarding ADA improvements may limit OPC's ability to limit any activity in the critical area. So it was recommended to remove this section of the bill, which is what you see in Bill 6325, because keeping it in the bill that passed holds up the rest of the bill from moving forward. It is my understanding that there is ADA protections in COMAR, which reach the same level of ability to put ADA ramps for peers here, but also allows for the flexibility of oversight from county departments.
Mr. Hunt? No. Mr. Hunt?
Ethan Hunt, on behalf of the administration, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Laurie Blair-Closmyre, Deputy County Attorney, for support of this. I'm sure Ms. Miller might be able to explain it, but this is coming at the recommendation of the Critical Area Commission.
Okay. Ms. Miller, did what Ms. Feedler say make sense to you, even if it didn't quite touch?
Yes, it did. And just to point out, there is in the code already, and I'm looking for the section, it's in 1813105, there's already provision that grants the county what's called reasonable accommodation to provide flexibility to a project or an application that's trying to accommodate disability requirements. So I think the critical area felt like that provision that allows us that reasonable accommodation is already in the code, and that adding this, there was concern that adding this additional language might be seen by some applicants as trying to circumvent that discretion that we already have in the code.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much. Next, Bill 6425, Subdivision Development, Community Meetings, Non-Public Schools. Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Secretary, I am withdrawing this legislation.
Noted. Thank you, Ms. Feedler.
All right. Bill number 6525, Homeowner's Property Tax Credit Program. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have, get down to the right spot on the, Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, Brian Schenk, our Tax Billing Manager from the Office of Finance, and Laurie Blair-Closmyre, our Deputy County Attorney. So this bill... So, this bill increases, modifies the local supplement to the Homeowner's Property Tax Credit Program by increasing the assessed value that is applicable for the credit from $350,000 to $400,000. We have to, under state law, we have to notify ESTAT by March 1st of each year if we're making changes to this, so we are getting out ahead of it since we had time, and it would take effect for the next tax year. I can turn it over to a team of experts who can probably explain the credit much more coherently than I can, in terms of how it works.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. You may recall, the county executive mentioned this in his budget address before you all in May, and this is something that was brought to his attention, and the administration wanted to put forward. The bill itself is a very simple change, it's just changing that maximum assessed value of the property that's eligible from 350 to 400, but what this will do is, it will allow a greater universe of people to get the credit, because even though the income thresholds aren't changing, because I think they're set by the state, the county has the ability to change the assessment value of the property. So, if you met the income requirements, and you've watched as your home value went up and up and up, and outpriced you from getting the credit, this will now jump up and allow you to still meet the credit. And then we've estimated the fiscal impact, which you can find in the fiscal note. It's not an exact science, because we don't know exactly who will apply, but Mr. Schenk, I think, and Mr. Hesim in my office did some really good work trying to put a decent estimate together. And if you want to know any more than that, this is a very, this is a very complex credit, and you'll note in the legislation, the way it's written, you'll see that. And I will defer to Mr. Schenk, who is much more knowledgeable on the mechanics of how it works, if you have any of those particular questions. But big picture, that's what the bill is doing. I will also just note, since we're all here and we're all friends, one of the strongest advocates of this has recently contacted us and let us know that, that he doesn't think that this quite does everything that he was hoping that it would, so I'm sure you will hear from that unnamed individual, and we stand ready to work, obviously, with the council or with anyone, you know, if there are changes that can make this better. But we do have to remember that the credit is born in the state legislation, and the county has the ability to supplement that, and so it's not, it's not an easy thing to do.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, oh, Ms. Pickard, I think you went first.
I just want to be added as cosponsor. Noted, thank you, Ms. Pickard.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I was just, I feel like I read this in, I read this in one of the documents about the bill, but what was the, when was, what year was the 350,000 threshold set? I'm trying to figure out the time period.
Here with me just one moment. I brought the legislation with me.
Oh, wait. 2006.
Yeah.
So, okay. She, I didn't, I saw. Thank you. Okay, so actually, I don't know, I just over, I mean, if you were to take a home that was appraised at 350,000 or under in 2006, I think you could go well beyond 400,000 in Anarundel County. I'm just...
Right, so, Brian Schenk, Office of Finance, just to explain a couple mechanics without getting into super-duper detail. The total tax that considers all the ad valorem taxes, but it counts the county's homestead credit and the state's homestead credit when it's doing that calculation. You start with a maximum valuation for the credit, which is essentially all the county taxes and state taxes, and then you reduce the amount of the credit accordingly based on income. So, the income is progressive credit, so as income increases, the total credit decreases accordingly. The state caps their component to 300,000 by state law, and the county is currently at 350,000, and this is going to increase that to 400,000. So, the total tax amount would increase based off of that threshold, but homestead credits are going to keep that lower because of the way the total tax liability is with the homestead credits considered. So, this gives a little bit of a higher threshold, but if you've been in your house for a number of years, and you can look at the tax bill that comes out later this month, you'll see that your homestead credit has grown consistently with that. I think the median household, or house price within the Anarundel County is about 450,000 right now, so this is below that kind of median level for all population of properties in the county.
Ms. Pickard.
So, what you just explained, which is how I was understanding all the information we've been provided, it's not what your house would sell for today, it's your taxable assessment, which is typically, because of our 2% homestead credit, much, much, much lower.
That is correct.
So, that's an interesting figure I hadn't heard, that our, you just said our median, what did you just say about our?
The median household price right now is 450,000. That was in the most recent budget book. That might be a couple of years old, but it's going to be based off of the market.
That's a taxable assessment.
That is the, the, the actual selling price of the houses. So, that's coming from state-reported data. The idea that what the state does when they're doing their assessments is, they'll take your house, and they'll look at comparable properties within a certain geographic area, and then they'll roughly speaking determine what the market value is based on the actual transactions that occur. So, your taxable assessment is roughly within that range, and then the state also has a phase-in period every three years, so if your new taxable assessment is $500,000, for taxable purposes, you might be at 400,000, but it'll phase in over the course of the next three years. That's mandated by state law. And then your homestead will reduce the portion that's liable to you based on that accordingly.
Okay, that's what I was getting to.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. So, y'all feel very comfortable with the, raising it to 400, rather than going any higher than that?
Well, so, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, I mean, you have to, again, you have to look at all the different components of this, right? So, as Mr. Schenk mentioned, the, the state has a, an existing cap, the county provides a supplement to go above that. As was previously mentioned, we have seen the home values and assessments increase over time. It was mentioned that the last time that the maximum was raised was 2006, over there, which I believe them, which is a long time ago. But you have to remember that this is kind of a multi-variable thing, right? Because in order to qualify, the credit is designed to give some tax relief to folks on the lower end of the income scale, right? So, you, that's why the income limits are there, and it makes sense that as, over time, we've seen the assessments go up, that if we want the same universe of people relatively to qualify, then we'd have to raise that. But you also may not want to go too high, right? Because if someone's in a million-dollar home, you might think, well, maybe they don't need to be getting the credit, right? So, is this a sweet spot? I don't know. We decided it was time for an incremental change. It doesn't quite go up to the median value that Mr. Schenk referenced, which is in the budget book, but it's, it's pretty close, it gets $50,000 closer. And as you'll see in the fiscal note, this increases the total universe of potential properties by a significant amount, by 30%, but remember that the folks that own those that also qualify for the income level is, is going to be much lower than that. So, that's why we estimate that the overall fiscal impact to the, of this credit will be in the neighborhood of 500,000. Again, we can't exactly predict it, because it depends on who applies, but we think that that is significant, but not, you know, not, not too high of, of a thing. And the other thing is, if we make this change now, and after a year or two, we'll get data, we'll see how it moves, in a couple more years, we could change it again, right? It hasn't been changed for a long time, so we think that this is a good step forward.
Do you think, based on all of the criteria, that, do you have a sense of what age demographic this is going to hit? It seems to me that it would skew towards a retired person.
Sorry. Brian Schenk, Office of Finance. Because the income element is so closely tied to just income, there are individuals who perhaps are in financial distress who qualify for it. The state doesn't release a lot of data as far as the age of the individuals receiving it, but colloquially, like what we, what we experienced when we talked to the taxpayers who call into office, a majority of them are elderly individuals. So, this income is basically considered retirement income, so portions of it are not considered for the calculation, so it's basically, they look at just taxable income, and they're not considering the non-taxable income.
Okay, thank you.
And, so, individuals have to apply for this at the state, for the state and for the local, in order to receive this credit?
That is correct. ESTAT has a single application. It is a yearly application. You have to submit all the necessary income data, what the household population consists of, so it's a very detailed information. When that application goes into the state, there's the county component and the state component that are considered as part of that same application process. So, a person who lives in the county will not have to do two separate applications, one to our office or one to the state. It's all part of that. The county then basically helps out with the state as far as getting that data together for their purposes.
Do we have any type of outreach that we do to possible, people that are possibly qualified for it? How do people find out about the credit?
So, Department of Aging, I know, does a very good outreach to their population of individuals they service, and I, I know I talk to individuals with the Department of Aging probably once a month about that. The homeowner credit is also mentioned in the county's tax flyer that goes out every year, so when we're putting that together, that, that has a big component in there, so residents, when they receive their tax bill, will see both the state homestead credit program mentioned, and the state's homeowner tax credit program, and then the county's mentioned in that component as well.
All right, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. Because I know the city of Annapolis sort of has a hybrid tax of where its property taxes go, and its rates, is that flyer generated by the county for city residents?
It is, in fact, yes. The only real difference between, we have actually three different flyers. We have one that's associated with the town of Highland Beach, we have one that's for the resident, regular properties outside the city and outside the town, and then we have one that goes specifically to the city. The largest difference between those flyers is the tax rates that are mentioned. So, when a city resident gets their flyer, they're going to see the three different tax rates, and citizens in the town's going to get one, which is, and then the county resident's going to show just the state and the county components.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to confirm that the income levels set in current code were set back in 2006?
So, in state code, it's an income, oh, oh, for the calculation purposes?
Yes.
That's correct as well.
Okay, thank you.
And that's state-based? That's not one we can...
Oh, sorry. So, the state sets the general eligibility based on income and assets, and that is set in state property tax article. It is set at $60,000 cap for income and $200,000 in assets. So, anyone, whether they're strictly for the county program or the state program, those are the maximum thresholds. So, if the resident unfortunately has a total income above those thresholds, or assets above those thresholds, they wouldn't qualify.
And that's taxable income?
Yeah, and that's taxable income. Assets is also taxable assets, so I believe the state completely discounts the house that they own, so that's not part of that, which is good based on those numbers, but it would be other, like retirement assets, things like that, or perhaps their bank accounts, things like that. The disclosures that are required on that application that they have to send, it's pretty detailed.
And what is the deadline for people to apply? When do they have to apply by?
The state recommends that people submit the application by April 1st, be considered basically for the upcoming tax year, and that's the tax, it would appear on the tax bill as it goes out the door. They have until October 1st to submit the application, in which case, what the state would do is they would notify us periodically, we get a couple reports each month, and they would tell us of the new approvals. If the person is above, I believe, 75 years old, they can retroactively apply for the credit up to three years previously. So, if a resident suddenly discovers, hey, I've never received this benefit before, I'm just now learning about it, they can go to the state, and the state would work with them to potentially get that credit retroactively back to about three years ago.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, any other questions? Thank you all very much. Next is Bill Number 6625. Ms. Rodvian, this is yours.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Some members from the Department of Health, who are supposed to be here for this, are also in their big meeting, and so if we might want to do the resolutions first, if Ms. Rodvian would like to, they may be here in time at the end, but I couldn't make any accommodations.
Ms. Rodvian, are you okay if we jump ahead to the others, and we'll come back, and if they're here, great, if not, we'll continue on. All right, so we're going to move on to Resolution Number 1825. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, joining me at the table will be Ann Bedowski, our Personnel Officer, Kelly Lovett, our Assistant Personnel Officer, and I have Laurie Blair-Closmyre, our Deputy County Attorney. So, this resolution is the annual resolution that sets forth the cost of healthcare benefits for county employees for the upcoming calendar year. This is required under the county code, and happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do you have any questions? Nothing? We brought all these people up, and we're letting them go with nothing. All right. We have no questions on that one. There you go. Next is Resolution Number 1925, which I think is very similar, is this. Just stay where you are.
Sure. So, Resolution 1925, I have the same folks at the table. This resolution is for the appointment to the OPEB trust, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust, also known as the Retiree Health Benefits Trust. So, the sole purpose of the fund, known as the Reserve Fund for Retiree Health Benefits, is to pay the healthcare benefits of retired county employees and their spouses, dependents, and survivors, and the interest earnings of the fund are retained to the credit of it. Section 815 of the charter authorizes the county to establish the Reserve Fund for Retiree Health Benefits, and that is what this board oversees. The trust consists of at least eight trustees, and Section 65104B provides that four of the trustees shall be appointed to the county, appointed by the county executive, and confirmed by resolution of the county council. So, this resolution appoints Doug Hart, who is a retiree, who has retired as a non-represented employee in the classified service, and it also reappoints O'Brien Atkinson, also known as Obie, nominated by a majority of the presidents of the county uniformed public safety unions, as well as Kevin Nethers, who's nominated by a majority of the presidents of the non-uniformed public safety unions to serve terms that began July 1st and expiring June 30th of 2028.
All right.
Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions about this resolution? All right, we're done. Now you can go, Ms. Bedowski. So, all right. No, it didn't. It didn't buy, we tried, we tried. So, let's hop back over to Bill Number 6625, and that's you, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. So, this is actually, I, I would like to think this is a really pretty straightforward bill that really is just trying to match state and county code to allow a property owner that has a facility that was formerly used for, for inpatient treatment to continue to do so in a slightly different fashion. So, if it's all right with you, I'd actually like to read a lovely, a lovely summary that was written by the attorney of the property owner, because I think it is very clear, and we'll do it, if I try to paraphrase, it won't be as good as what she wrote here. So, "The property owner is running into an issue with prospective, prospective operators and the alignment of state and local nomenclature. An eating disorder treatment facility was envisioned as a subset of a mental health facility specializing in eating disorders but treating multiple mental health conditions. The state does not license a use called an eating disorder treatment facility. However, the Office of Healthcare Quality in the Department of Health issues a license for a limited private inpatient facility pursuant to 10-501 of the Health General Article and COMAR 10.07.16.02. As part of the licensure process, an applicant must demonstrate to the Office of Healthcare Quality that it has approval to operate in the relevant local jurisdiction. The property owner and its consultants and prospective operators have all been advised that the definition of eating disorder treatment facility in Anarundel County does not fully align with a limited private, private inpatient facility, and therefore, they are not certain a license can be issued." They are basically asking us to amend the definition in the Anarundel County Code to make it clear that a limited private inpatient facility license is a requirement of such a facility. So, it's basically to align, again, the county and the state language, so it's clear that they are operating, and I'm going to let Ms. Miller add anything, but to make it clear that what they're doing is indeed allowed by the county code. Is that fair? allowed by the county code. Is that fair? The, all right. So that's it. It's really just to make sure that they are, have their behinds covered and they're following the law.
So just a semantics one of, for their clarifying-
Yes.
-of what can be allowed.
Yes.
So, all right. Any questions? I think we're all good with that. Okay. All right. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? All right. That's it, guys. May I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Monday, July 21st, 2025 at 7:00 PM for our next legislative session in our chambers.